Call to order the study session June 4th, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear? Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shotwell?
Here.
First opportunity for public comment. You have three minutes to address the board. Please state your name. You cannot share your time with others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions.
Peter Bormuth. I wanted to comment on a couple items on the agenda. We see the SRI default resolution here again. And we know this has been ongoing for a long time. I was just informed by Chairman Shotwell that the special master has filed his report with the court. So we're, as far as I know, still waiting on the judge to come to some decision. I'm hopeful that this can be resolved soon. As you know, it's been ongoing for several years. And it's been a drag on the budget. And hopefully, something will happen. I also see that you're applying for a liquor license for the Keely Park American One Event Center. I support this, but I'd like to note that the city of Jackson recently took two liquor licenses off the market. One for the Hayes Hotel and the other for their art center and kitchen development over there at the old Vermuens Building in the Sonic Temple. So you're taking another liquor license out of the pile, which is limited. You're aware there's only a limited number. And I hope you'll be aware that there are private citizens who are also interested in getting liquor licenses for their own businesses and business ideas. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Entertain a motion to approve the May 7th, 2019 minutes.
Oh, sir.
You have a motion in support? Any questions? Corrections, deletions? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? SRI default resolution? Does anyone need an explanation from the administrator?
I've got one question for him, if I could. Do you want the motion first, or?
Please.
I'd so move the resolution.
You have a motion in support. Place Chairman Elwell.
Mike, the 1% penalty is piling up. All the commissioners, I think, are aware of that amount. Is... Do you think Leoni is quite clear on that? On the total amount that's due just by penalty, not on the actual payments itself?
Yeah, I'm positive they're aware. They may not agree, but they're aware.
Well, may not agree or may not like it.
No, both, probably. They haven't been agreeable on these things.
Okay. Thank you.
So, ah, excuse me.
Tony?
Reading this resolution, if somebody can clarify for me, how is the county going to actually get this money that Leoni has defaulted on for years? It appears we're just asking the state if there's excess funds they're returning to Leoni. They return them to us instead. Is that the... Is that the limit of how we are recouping this loss?
If I may?
Go ahead.
You're partially correct. We do do what the law allows, and that is take a percentage of their state revenue sharing that comes to us. The additional that they owe just adds up in, as Commissioner Elwell said, implied, that is that there's interest accumulating on that. And now it comes down to a verdict. We've been in litigation for quite a number of years now, and we're hopeful that in the very near future, a decision will be made and a judgment will be entered against Leoni telling them to pay us. So if the judge orders it, they'll either appeal or write a check.
May I continue? We're waiting for a judge to rule. How long has a judge been sitting on this?
Well, I wouldn't use the word "sitting on," but I would say it's been a number of years in litigation.
That seems excessive to me.
It's been, what is it, guys, four years, maybe?
If I may. And I think Commissioner Kennedy may be aware of this also. There were continuous appeals as far as the Michigan Supreme Court. And every time a decision was made, there would be an appeal as far as the Michigan Supreme Court made by Leoni's attorney. So the ongoing issues with this case are, I hate to say it, typical in the decision-making process when you're talking about how severe it is. At the end of the day, some taxpayers are going to end up paying. Who's going to end up paying? Commissioner Bear? The question comes to interpretation, to which taxpayers it is.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, so the issue at hand, Commissioner Bear, is the monies that Leoni Township was due was always contingent on the three other townships that had the SRI ran out to them. Okay? It was always contingent on the county making sure that those townships paid Leoni, so therefore, Leoni could then reimburse the county. Somewhere along the line, that's never occurred. And now Leoni's trying to be held to foot the entire bill, and that's wrong. We'll see how the court issue goes. But my question is to Mr. Overton. To me, the resolution's a little bit ambiguous. States up top, Leoni solely for the $355,500, $362.50, and then in the bottom, it mentions the other three townships as well. So what's the county's official stance on that? Is it all Leoni's debt, or?
Yes.
Yes?
The contract reads, and the interpretation put forward by this board in a vote, is that Leoni is expected to pay the entire debt, and it is their job to collect it, and it is their responsibility within their sewer authority to be able to pay it. And that's the contract Leoni signed when they asked the county to put their full faith and credit.
Even though there's been a legal ruling that they cannot collect from these municipalities, and that only the county can?
Well, you and I could debate this all day long. It is being left to lawyers and litigants within the Circuit Court of Jackson, and I think we will wait for his decision, Corey. That would be the best and proper place for you and I to be, considering it's an ongoing legal battle.
Fair enough.
Mr. Chair. Mike, isn't it more really the obligation we have to do this resolution to declare them in default, to make sure that we get the money back, is what this resolution really is about? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further commissioner questions? Any comments? Seeing none? Are you ready to post?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Pass six to one. Administrator Overton?
I see Mr. Bolt moving towards the podium. We have the JC.Lawrence Avenue contract.
Morning, Commissioners. We have before you a contract from M.D. for Lawrence Avenue. It's a four-inch mill and fill from West Michigan Avenue to Argyle. .7 miles. It'll be let this Friday and completed by November. We hope construction will get going here in July or August, but the contract merely stipulates completion by November and gives contractor flexibility on their start date. Cost is $745,000, of which $610,000 is provided by the grant. We only get 35 days to turn these around, and it arrived right after the cutoff for the May board cycle, so we're seeking action today, if you'd be so kind.
I'd move for approval.
We have a motion in support. Any questions? Yes, sir?
I'm not sure. I'll follow up and find out. Sometimes we run into situations where we have to stop at the limits of the right-of-way.
Okay.
But I'll find out. We don't like to do that. We try to coordinate and go over tracks.
Do the railroad companies pay for the extra we ought to do because of their tracks, or are they just granted the right-of-way?
I wish, but no. Yeah, we're usually on the hook for all that.
All right. Thank you.
To be aware, that track is owned by Michigan Department of Transportation now.
Is it?
Yeah. So, yeah, we're paying, Phil. Coming out of your wallet twice.
There we go. Darius?
It depends. There's a little bit of concrete work with it and so forth, so you might see some of the subcontractors in there from time to time. The project itself should go relatively quickly, maybe two to three weeks, once it gets up and rolling. I don't know a start date, but watch our updates every month, and we'll put that in there. The letting is this Friday, and then there's an award process. So about two to three weeks later, we usually know. We meet with contractor, have a pre-construction meeting, and we get their schedule. So you should know in July, we should know in July as well, when the schedule will be.
Have you decided on a contractor yet already?
No, the letting is... What they do is they open the bids. We call that a letting. That's this Friday, so...
It opens this Friday?
That's this coming Friday.
Okay.
Right. So this was moving in good faith through M.D. channels. It's a state letting. And then they won't do anything unless they get this contract back.
Okay.
So it's moving in parallel paths. So as long as they get the contract, everything will move smoothly.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? Everyone ready to vote? Please post. Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a liquor license. Looks like Kyle's approaching the podium.
Good morning. So we're brought to you today a liquor license for Keely Park. The county currently does not have a permanent liquor license for the fairgrounds or for Keely Park. We utilize what the state allows, 12 temporary one-day licenses throughout a calendar year, so we utilize those for the county fair and for Beer Fest and for any other events that we produce there. With the new event center and the type of events that will attract there and having the ability to produce additional events, a permanent license is what we're seeking. So staff have been going through the process of obtaining a Class C resort license, which would not be restricted to one area. It would be for the entire park, including the buildings. Before a new license would be considered, we needed to first try to acquire any existing licenses that are available for purchase, basically businesses that have gone out of business. There were 13 that were available within Jackson County, so we attempted to contact each owner. We heard back from four of those 13. Two of them required the building to be a part of the license, so we basically would need to buy a bar. A third one had an asking price of $52,000. And then the fourth was, it's actually owned by the Michigan Department of Treasury. And they responded to let us know that the license would be going to an auction May 22nd and that we would need to go through the process with a minimum bid of $20,000. So we attended the auction, and we were the winning bid with $28,000. Typically, you have 24 to 48 hours to come up with the funds. They gave us a little bit longer, so we'd be able to take it here for an action item today and contingent on our park board approval, which would be tomorrow. That's why we're here with an action item today.
Entertain a motion? You have a motion in support? Any questions? Mr. Elwell?
For Mike, if I could, well, maybe the chair. Wouldn't it normally go to the Parks Board first and then come to us? I mean, it seems like we're the final ruling body, and yet, we're voting yes and then they're...
That would be yes, that's normal, but I suspect it's a timing issue with the state, right?
Right.
Yeah, they just need to move it forward. It is what they're doing.
Well, it sounds like it's a timing issue with parks, right? I mean, with the Parks Board. If it's going to the Parks Board after it goes to us...
No, yeah, I understand. Bottom line is, the county doesn't need the Parks Board's permission to buy a liquor license.
Okay, well, that's kind of the point.
Regardless, and I don't foresee any problems with the Parks Board either, for that matter.
But I'm just making the point for procedurally. I just personally think it should come to the Parks Board first, and then it should like that, and then to us.
We agree, and I guess the really only option would have been to have a special Parks Board meeting prior to this meeting. But, you know, that creates a lot of inconvenience for a lot of people, and, you know, honestly, this does the job too. Here's my opinion on it.
Make the Board of Commissioners aware that during the cycle of the airport, we voted on a number of measures before the airport board voted, and then ours was a concurrence of their board also. So we have used this in past practice when it's an urgent situation. So I would appreciate the board choosing to vote at this time without us having to have a special meeting on Monday after the Parks Board meeting. I agree.
Mr. Kennedy?
Just one question, where the funds will be coming to purchase it? Out of what budget?
These funds were budgeted in the operating budget for the event center. We were... We knew we were doing this. We'd been planning.
So once again, not from village funds?
No.
Thank you.
Darius?
My question was, well, one of the questions I had was the exact question that was already asked, but to keep the license, are there any other fees associated with that?
No.
So once you have it, you have it?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further.
Any further questions? Madam Clerk, could you post? Jackson County Emergency Management.
Well, I will kick it off just briefly here, and I'll turn it over to Debra. As I envisioned this transition, the emergency manager would report, be a direct report for Debra. She handles, in our organizational chart, she handles all the court and public safety side of operations. Of course, Debra reports directly to me. And I would also add that in the past, in my last community, the sheriff's department did not oversee emergency management. I was... We were part of a three-county operation there as far as emergency management. I was a part of that operation. But Debra, if you'd give us the overview of your staff report, then we can take some questions. And feel free to chime in as you see fit, guys.
So in my staff report, I kind of highlight the legislation that dictates the emergency management at a local and a state level, which is the Emergency Management Act 390 of 1976. Within that MCL, it indicates that the emergency management coordinator shall be appointed by the county board of commissioners. In the absence of that person, the emergency management coordinator shall be the chairperson of the county board of commissioners. We do have an emergency management coordinator that is currently housed under administrative responsibility with the sheriff. The person is a sergeant, and making this move would remove him from the COAM union. The only loss that we're aware of at this time, I've referred him to HR to speak with HR, but the only significant losses that he would experience would be anything that's negotiated in the COAM contract, such as a uniform allowance, which I'm not sure he even gets, because he usually is dressed in civilian wear.
COMA?
COAM is Command Officer Association of Michigan. It's a police union.
Okay. Thank you.
So we believe that there's minimal impact on his position. The benefits of moving him, one of the big things is, number one, to be in compliance with the statute, but number two, he works cooperatively with 911 in coordinating a lot of the emergency management efforts. And 911, again, is under the administrator's office for supervision. He works locally as well with all of our local communities. There's only 16 counties left where the emergency manager reports to the sheriff, so we're one of the last few who have not moved this away from the sheriff department. Some of the communities that we've looked at have, they have it set up in different ways, but currently, this office is financed in two different ways. They have some grants, two different grants. One grant is $67,000 and some change that we get annually. That's a Homeland Security Grant program that focuses on local efforts. One of the efforts that is paid through that is the Code RED program, which is about $30,000 a year, which is our text alert system, and throughout the county. We also have another grant that pays for a portion of the salary of the emergency management coordinator. That grant runs about $35,000. In total, the general fund contributes about $89,000 and some change to this department. So, any questions?
Mr. Elwell?
Thank you. Just to clarify, will there be any budget adjustments from the sheriff department, or is everything currently coming out of general fund?
Currently, the way that it's set up in the budget, it's a separate department. There's an emergency management department that appears to be separate from the sheriff. So it doesn't look like it's in there, and I have a copy of that if anybody wants to see it.
Any further questions? Commissioner Bear?
Do we have a motion on the floor right now?
We do not.
Pardon me. A related motion I would like to make is that we asked our administrator to review our current policy, particularly for myself, looking at the, how much funding is provided in our general budget, and to look at the funds that are available for the chairperson to spend during the, in the consequence of an emergency, and that we get this report back at our August meeting, so we can take this into consideration when reviewing the annual budget.
Any questions?
If I could word that more succinctly, that'd be fine.
Well, just a question. Is it necessary to have a motion to do that? And you're... So just to be clear, Tony, you're not moving this request as part of your motion, I assume that's a...
Correct. I'm just requesting that we make a formal motion to direct the manager to review this, come back to us with a copy of the current emergency management plan, recommendations as to is the current level of funding appropriate or not, and is the current level of funds available to the chairperson during an emergency, is that amount adequate? Currently, the document that I have, which I know is probably outdated, says in an emergency for the first seven days, the limit is $1,000. Well, at today's expense, what are you going to get for $1,000 if there's a declared emergency?
So I don't think that we need a motion to do what you're doing personally, but I also don't think we should tie those legitimate questions and points to this issue. I think these are separate issues, and if there is a support for the motion, I'm going to move to separate, but I have not heard a support for Tony's motion yet, if the chair has recognized it.
I have it this time. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Commissioner Elwell?
I move to divide the questions and vote on them separately.
Support.
Okay.
So I need a motion for the first question?
I move the agenda item related to emergency management.
I have support for that. So the first thing we will take in sequence will be the agenda item and then Commissioner Bear's special motion.
Well, I just had one question on that before we...
Certainly.
Okay. Was there any added labor cost by making this change? In other words, I believe you said it was a sergeant? Are they going to receive an increase in salary?
The only thing that we would anticipate similar to what we did with the 911 director, his position will change slightly. He previously didn't handle budget and those types of things, so as we did with the 911 director, I would anticipate that we would point factor his position as a non-union person, because he's going from a union grading scale to a non-union. So I would anticipate we would have to re-point factor his position based on any new responsibilities. Right now, in the sheriff department, the undersheriff handles all the budgeting and those types of things, payroll. And so I don't know what that looks like as far as what his point factor is going to turn out to be. In the, for the 911 director, it changed one grade, which was, I think, about $4,000 or $5,000. So if it did come out that it would change the point factoring, changing it from a non-union to, or union to non-union, what that would look like, if it would change at all, but if it would, like I said, the past experience was that it changed one grade.
Well, I would just point out, if that did in fact occur, and that position was taken on additional responsibilities, then the sheriff's position would theoretically be taking less responsibility.
Well, the sheriff's position would go away.
Sure.
So this, this position would be eliminated from the sheriff department, and it would just be moved out of the sheriff department under responsibility, as Mike indicated to me. So...
Okay. So when you say that's removed, is the billing of it removed from the sheriff's department? I'm not real familiar with that budget, so...
It is, it is a separate budget from the sheriff, so really, it's, I've got it listed as Department 355, Emergency Management. I don't know what department the sheriff's is in the budget system.
So those funds would no longer go to that?
To the sheriff.
Thank you. That's what that was.
Yep, sorry. Correct. And I did get clarification from Jason, the current emergency coordinator, that there is funding available if a state, if the governor declares a state of emergency, the state would release funds to us for that emergency. If it's a national disaster, funding is available from the national level, so...
Thank you.
Further questions? We'll be voting on Commissioner Elwell's motion first, and then Commissioner Bear's. So this is Commissioner Elwell's, the agenda item. Yep, we're going to start with to divide the question.
Call roll?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Bear? Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Go ahead and post Commissioner Elwell's motion, which will be the agenda item. Just a reminder, this is approval of confirmation of the administrator's report on relationships with the emergency management department to the administrator controller's office, which is a separate item. Please vote. Okay, now, the second motion is to request from the administrator controller's office a review of the 1997 resolution and to check the qualifying funding of the emergency
a review of the 1997 resolution and to check the qualifying funding of the emergency management in case of an emergency. Correct? What, what Commissioner Bear is asking for, and he shared with me prior to the meeting, is that he would like a review of the resolution and the statutory responsibilities of the county done by the Administrator Controller's Office, because his concern is how old the resolution is, and that current resolution states what we are currently doing, what we just took action to do. He would just like to make sure that we're completely up to date on where we're at.
So if I can just comment, I agree, it's, I think, a 97 resolution, and one of the things that I noted in it, it names, I think, or mentions two people that fallen behind the emergency management coordinator, and that, I don't know if that even applies anymore, or where those people are positioned, so I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to that. So this resolution doesn't change anything, it just directs that the Administrator's Office look into that resolution and the underpinning requirements.
Yes, correct. Everyone understand?
Sure.
We have a motion from Tony Bear, support from Commissioner Kennedy. Please. Should have it appearing before you?
And Mr. Chair, the first resolution, I didn't see that that got posted, but that was unanimous too?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Unanimous?
Unanimous.
And that passed unanimously. Any other items to come before the board? We've arrived at public comment the second time, for two minutes. Any public comment?
Just congratulate Parks on the excellent price they got at the auction for their liquor license.
Any other public comment? Seeing no hearing none, any commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
Yeah, just for the record, I'd like to know if any county contribution at all went towards the needle exchange program that the city wants to start down at the Aware Shelter.
Administrator?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any contribution to the money or anything like that. You guys, no.
The Health Department wouldn't have had a fund to help fund it or anything like that where we wouldn't need to approve?
No, no, I don't know of any funds, like, where they have that kind of discretion. Plus, I think the, well, let's put it this way, I know they understand our position on that, so.
Everybody?
They understand our position on that, and that they should not be deviating from our position, so I'll, I'll follow up and make sure, but no. The board's been clear about that.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? We are adjourned.